The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Called the meeting to order this morning. Commissioners Arnold and Warren are present.
I make a motion to recess the Commissioners' meeting and open the salary board meeting.
May I second that? Can I get a vote on that?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Item number one, Commissioner, I call the salary board meeting to order at 9:01.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 27, 2016 salary board meeting.
May I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to create the Union Full-Time Position of Probation Collection/Compliance Enforcement Officer, Range 11, 40 hours a week, six months probation period, with benefits according to the government mandated requirements effective February 24, 2016, for the recommendation of Judge Schumacher, Chief of Probation, and Jason Legg, President Judge.
Do I second on that? No? Oh, I make a motion that that be tabled for the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll have to withdraw my motion. I'll withdraw my motion.
Any reason?
Because we didn't get a second. And I will make a motion to table item number five as listed on your agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six.
I'll make a motion to set the rate of pay. I'm going to remove the election board members and make it just election board member Jeffrey Tyler. I'd like added in there at a flat rate of $500 per person plus mileage for the 2016 election year. In case of a recount, the rate will be reviewed at that time.
May I second that? All in favor?
Public comment?
Public comments.
Public comments?
What was the rate prior to 500?
500.
500?
So it was a steady rate of 500?
Yes.
Whether they meet five times a year or 20 times a year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, that was just for Jeff, you said?
That's just for Jeff.
Wait a minute, it's only for one person?
Well, we're the other election people, so it's part of our job.
So what is your, what is your pay per?
Do either of you get 500?
It's part of your job, it's part of the Commissioner's pay to be part, to be on the election board.
Do any of these substitute, the substitute election board members who, when, for example, if someone's running for office, do they get a rate of pay, or does that volunteer?
Could you repeat that, please?
Well, for example, we have election board meetings when candidates are running, who may be on the board, and they need substitutes?
That's what this is, Jeffrey Tyler is Allen Hall's substitute.
I understand. Do all three of those people, when, let's say, three people are running, who are county employees, whatever, county commissioners, they get 500 also?
Yes.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Number seven? I'm sorry, did you vote? We voted on that, he said he seconded it, and I said aye. Pardon? On number six, you're talking?
I made the motion.
And he seconded it? Oh, I seconded it, okay.
And we need to vote on it, we have public comment.
Okay, public comment.
Definitely have that, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please bear with me, folks, thank you. Number seven.
Did we have public comment, no public comment?
Well, he had a public comment, I thought we did there.
Well, there's general public comment, there's general public comment.
I'd like to know more about the full-time position probation collections compliance enforcement officer. Is that a brand-new position? Or that's been around? Mary Ann, if you want to answer?
That, that position right now, it was to create one in probation, and since it's been tabled, there's nothing really to talk about.
Okay, so it's a new position?
Any other comment?
Where is Mr. Hall?
Out of town, he was away.
He was out of the office today.
He's out of the office? That's the official explanation? I'm serious, he's a Commissioner, I'm just curious to know why he's not in the meeting. Is he at a meeting in Bradford County, is he at a meeting in Dependon? Or he's just out of?
Yeah, like, where is he? Can you answer that, or is that not answerable for some reason?
I was told he's out of town.
Okay.
Anything else? I make a motion to close the salary board meeting and return to the Commissioners' meeting.
I'll second that, it's 9:07.
Commissioners' meeting reconvened at 9:07.
I'll make a motion to table the minutes of the February 10, 2016 Commissioners' meeting, because there's not a, because Allen's not here, and I wasn't here.
Okay, I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number six as listed on the agenda, with the ratifications or approvals of the cash disbursements and EFTPS payments.
I second that. motion by Commissioner Warren to ratify and approve the following, the cash disbursements and the electronic payments, seconded by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Any comment?
I'll make a motion to ratify or approve the seminar requests that are listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any comment?
Just had a question, first one, the children, youth, Williamsport. Is Spencer Stoud related to Bob Stoud, that's the emergency management person?
Yes, I believe he is.
Okay, just noticed the name is unusual, so I was gonna see. And, let's see. Okay, thank you.
Any other comment? Okay. Number eight? We've not voted, I'm sorry. Right, all in favor of that?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the hiring of William C. Urbanski of Kingston to the open full-time, non-union position of First Assistant District Attorney, minimum 40 hours a week, salary of $60,000 a year, six-month probation period, and benefits according to the government mandated requirements effective February 29, 2016, for the recommendation of District Attorney Robert Klein.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
I never worked out with the 5, 10, 15-year requirements.
Excuse me, I had a public comment before you voted. I believe that's supposed to come before you vote, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So does that vote still count?
You might have to re-vote, is there a comment?
I have a question. Do we know anything else about Mr. Urbanski, Urbanski, other than he's gonna get $60,000 a year? What his qualifications are, where he came from, what he's done?
I believe he's, he's from Kingston, I know that.
With all due respect.
He's a trial attorney, Franklin County Public Defender Office, Columbus, Ohio. This is like his old little resume here, Legislative Aid Pennsylvania State Representative, G. Scott Duretrich. Writer, columnist, and correspondent for the Wilkes-Barre Times Leader and Carlisle Centennial. He's been a zoning board member.
What's his job right now, before he took this job?
He is an attorney.
Excuse me, I believe I had the?
He's an attorney with his own office, I'm just kidding.
I believe I had the floor, but with all due respect.
Sorry.
I would think that the Commissioners would do a little bit of research and homework on the people we're hiring, before we just raise our hands and, you know, you just come up, okay, I make a motion, I second, let's go.
Well, this is the DA's department, so he does the hiring of his department.
This is, the Commissioners are hiring him, and he's working for Mr. Klein, which means the taxpayers are hiring him, and we hardly know, I mean, you guys don't even know anything. My comment.
Stacy?
I do believe that each elected official has the hiring and firing ability in their own department, and the Commissioners would have no.
And you don't think they should have any foreknowledge of the people we're hiring?
I didn't say that, I'm just saying that.
Assistant District Attorney?
That it would be a separation of duties.
Could I just say that this resume was brought before the Commissioners, prior to? I was just digging it out to make sure it was.
Okay, well, perhaps that should be changed, that you actually know a little bit more about these. I mean, we're not talking about hiring an assistant clerk, this is an ADA.
Absolutely, but, but his resume was given.
And he was recommended by the man he's gonna work for, don't you think that's enough?
No. No, I think the public should have the same information.
I agree.
Not what he ate for breakfast, but his background.
Yes, sir.
Well, I've been here a few times, I've been absent for a while, but I've seen you argue or confer about a $5,000 expenditure from the county. This is a $60,000 a year, full-time position, and if District Attorney Klein thinks he's great, perfect, but you have to say yes, or he doesn't work for District Attorney Klein. So, so this is, as Bruce so eloquently spoke, this is taxpayer money. Why isn't District Attorney Klein here with the candidate and represents him? That would be the fairest thing. I've seen the Farm Bureau here asking for five grand and having to beg for the money and explain all the expenditures in a chart before it was given. Here you have $60,000 expenditure, we're just gonna wave our hand over it, we don't know who the guy is. And if he's referred by the guy who wants to hire him, that's great, but shouldn't we meet him? Shouldn't he, I've seen the oil and gas industry come here and explain projects and stand here and represent themselves, or any other group that wants money, far less than $60,000. So I would just, I would think it would be considered a taxpayer, by the way, whether I'm here or not at this meeting, I do own two pieces of property here, and I am a taxpayer in Susquehanna County, but beside the point, I would just think it would be better, it would be more legitimate for this body to have all three here, have the person stand and meet the people, introduce himself and explain who he is, not a resume you're reading, and have District Attorney Klein here, if he has the time and could make it, to at least introduce this person that he recommends, it would be good to hear it from the person. That is $60,000, it's a lot of money, so, just as a tax-paying citizen here in Susquehanna County, it would be, I'd feel much better if we didn't just wave a magic wand over somebody that somebody else recommended, no matter whether that's his boss or not. So, nothing against him, he might be a great guy. I'm sure everyone here would like to meet him and have him say who he is and what he's about, so that we get some input before $60,000 is spent. Just my, my personal opinion as a taxpayer, but I think that would be a more effective way to spend $60,000, even if we all agree he's great, and Mr. Klein says he's awesome, really doesn't matter, he's, Mr. Klein is not paying the salary of this person, the taxpayers of Susquehanna County are, so, just, just wanted to give my input on it. It just seemed like a rapid expenditure of $60,000 on somebody that I absolutely know nothing about. Just, do I have a comment? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, I appreciate that. I understand what you're saying. Sandy?
Just for my own clarification, it was my understanding that this position was created two meetings ago, and the salary was set at that time, correct? Irrespective of what candidates were yet coming forward to apply for it, that's correct? Okay, thank you.
I just wanna address the idea of, being a businessperson myself, if I put people in positions, and I say you can hire a staff, I'm gonna take their recommendations and agree with it. I mean, maybe the Commissioners wanna do the happy wave over to make the town feel happy about it, but if, if I trust an individual who was elected to position to hire, I'm gonna trust that they're gonna hire the right person that they can work with, and that I'm not gonna waste everybody's time just so you guys can meet this person and say hello, is my view, is that we have systems in place where the hierarchy, the hierarchy is gonna hire who they would like to have worked with.
Thank you very much for your comment. Edna?
I am a former businessperson, and I was responsible for hiring a lot of people in my career. The issue at the floor, and I'm addressing the chair, the issue on the floor is not the salary, the issue on the floor is not the position that was open and exposed two meetings ago. The issue on the floor is, did we get a chance to see this man, meet this man? He's going to be working in our legal department, the taxpayers' legal department, and the public has a right to know who they're hiring. The same way when we go to the polls to vote and put you people in office, we have a right to know who is being hired and how our tax money is being spent. It is a right, not a privilege, it's a right. So, that was the issue on the floor.
Thank you. Walton?
Well, I've been for hiring people out of county as much as we can. And all attorneys we got in this county, when we're hiring somebody out of the union, it don't add up, 'cause the taxpayer in this county pays their salary.
Thank you. Well? Do you want to add to this? We aren't voting on it.
We need to re-vote.
We need to re-vote? Or do you think we need to table? All right?
Are you gonna re-vote that, or no? We did not, you voted before anybody spoke.
Yeah, it needs to be re-voted. We can re-vote or table.
Can we have an executive meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
What is the purpose?
Personnel issues. At 9:18.
Do you have a return?
Return at 9:18.
Public comment is noted, are there any other comments? Can I have a vote on item eight on the agenda?
I vote aye.
Aye. Item number nine?
I make a motion to, to sign the lease agreement between Susquehanna County and Tree Haven for the period starting July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2016, for the use of 25 county vehicles at $1 per vehicle. I would like to get rid of the first column in that table, please, and just have what the vehicle was, what make, and the ID number for it.
I second that, are there any comment?
It's confusing, is it 50 different lease agreements, or is it, there's 25 on each side, I think? So is it, is that the same group, or is there 50 total?
There's 25 total.
25, so it's one chart and then a second chart?
Yeah.
That's the same, okay. I just, I just thought it was both together, so, thank you.
They're different leasing terms.
And why are you removing the first column, what's the reason? Because I'm being told that it's the replacement year. I didn't really understand it, so I don't really feel what needs to be there.
We've been in the process of replacing these vehicles right now. Okay, I second that, do, can we have their comment, is there any vote? Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to sign the lease agreement between Susquehanna County and Tree Haven, again, for the period starting July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017, for the vehicles that are listed at $1 per vehicle, and I'm being told there's 25 again, and I would like the first column of that table removed again, please.
I second that, is there any comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to sign the purchase service agreements with Children and Youth Services and the businesses that are listed on your agenda.
I second that, is there any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to adopt proclamation 2016-01 for 200 years of continued service Susquehanna County Independence.
I second that. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adopt proclamation 2016-02 proclaiming March colon cancer awareness month in Susquehanna County.
I second that. Any questions or comments?
How do you get to decide some kind of proclamation, like this one? Who decides that, who presented that, who thought of it? I mean, where do you get these things from?
Do you answer that?
I'm trying to figure the man's name, what's his name? Terry Phillips, tax collector in Clifford Township. His wife passed away from colon cancer, I don't know, since I've been in office, so within the last 12 years, and he initiated this through the Scranton Cancer Society, and has come to us every year to participate.
So we've had it every year, this week?
Yes.
I think there is a casual day called, later this month, and it's like every month towards the end of March.
Item number 14 on the agenda. Can we vote on that? Aye.
Aye.
Number 14 on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2016-01 authorizing the filing of an application for Pennsylvania Competitive Community Development Block Grant Fund to be administered by the Susquehanna County Housing and Redevelopment Authority for light removal in the borough of Susquehanna Depot.
I second that, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to know more about it, and what are they going to take care of? Do they know, do they have specific projects right now for Susquehanna Depot?
Bobby Joe?
Yes, Susquehanna boroughs identified over 20 vacant inflated properties that have been either condemned or in the process of being condemned, and about seven of those are those that have been served to the owners, they have done nothing with for over two, three years. So they are, like I said, about seven that have been identified to come down with this funding, and then a lien would be placed against the property, so if the owner was to do anything with it, the funds would come back into the county for further light removal.
So you put a lien on the property, landowner still owns it?
Yes.
And he has to use those funds to somehow make the property not condemned anymore?
Right, they're gonna, the properties are gonna be demolished, most of them are.
Well, they're gonna be demolished, you know?
Yes, most of them are unusable lots, that nobody's going to wanna take over, so in order to spur further revitalization, they need to go.
And they're right in the borough?
Yes, all in the borough.
Thank you, Bobby Joe. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2016-02, resolution of Susquehanna County Board of Commissioners to enter into a cooperative agreement. Can we put with the Susquehanna County Housing and Redevelopment, can we add that part? Authority of the county of Susquehanna? Can we get rid of that part?
I second that. Any questions or comments?
Can you explain the redevelopment authority, who's on it? Any information on that authority?
That's Bobby Joe's.
That's Bobby Joe's?
Yeah, I'm the grants administrator for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and the redevelopment authority is entering into a cooperation agreement. We administer the county block grant that they get automatically each year, and this would be a competitive application, that we compete statewide for the funds, so we need a, an additional cooperation agreement for us to administer the grant if funded.
And when you, when you say redevelopment, besides dealing with condemned properties, what else is involved in redevelopment?
We're housing and redevelopment, all kinds of community development projects, sidewalks, sanitary sewers, storm sewer work, paving. We assist the communities every year with the block grant that we come to the county for.
Is there any new housing that goes under that, too?
Not on, not this year, well, there will be in Milford Borough. We were awarded funding from the Phare Fund to construct low-income housing in Milford Borough. Four cities underway, there's some new housing going up there.
And what's the name of the fund, you said Phare?
Phare, P-H-A-R-E, funding from the impact fees set aside specifically for housing.
Oh, so that's coming from impact fees? Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 16?
Make a motion to sign the cooperative, I guess, the cooperation agreement for management responsibilities of Community Development Block Grant by and between Susquehanna County Board of Commissioners and the Susquehanna County Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
I second that, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 17?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2016-03 for Susquehanna County Burn Ban, scheduled for 12:01 a.m. Saturday, March 5, 2016, through 12:01 a.m. Monday, April 4, 2016.
I second that, any questions or comments?
How do you figure, how do you know when to figure a burn ban, when it's like, what is this now? Couple of weeks away, or, how do they know that that should be like the whole month you can't burn?
We don't know, it's not an exact science. The fire chiefs have reviewed the past couple of months with the weather we've been having. We've had abnormally warmer times this winter and drier times this winter. Three weeks ago, over the course of a weekend, there were six brush fires in the county, and caring forward, looking at the projected weather pattern, and conversation with National Weather Service and the Climate Prediction Center, they're calling for continued above normal temperatures and evil chances of above, below, or normal precipitation. So the fire chief saw it was prudent that they enact a burn ban to try and lessen the potential for catastrophic brush fires in the county.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you.
Paul, is, is brush fire the only reason, or is it?
Paul, is, is brush fire the only reason, or have we ever done a burn ban for air quality issues?
Never for air quality. I'm not even sure the act allows for air quality issues. The act, I believe, just allows for the dangers
Dry condition, danger. Okay, I just wanted to see if that was a clarification, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2016-04, a resolution of the county, and we had a Y to count, of Susquehanna, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania urging General Assembly and Administration to restore funding for human services programs to historic levels, and to put mechanisms in place to assure any budget impasse or budget delay does not become a burden on Susquehanna County and its constituents.
I second that, questions or comments?
You know why the budget's held up? Ninety percent of it is because the governor wants to tax the oil and gas industry, and of course, nobody in the legislature wants it. So I'm not for tax either, I don't believe in taxing bad behavior, like smoking or anything else, just causes more harm to people in good, but it just, it dumbfounds me why that's being held up, but that, if you ask any of them, I've called many times why they're holding up the budget, especially for some of the agencies that are being, and they wanted to help schools with, which is an insult, because a lot of the schools are having to borrow money to stay afloat, because they won't pass a budget. It's not helping any kids or any schools, so my advice to them was, pick a fight on the tax at a different time, but get the budget passed, because without it, you're harming more agencies than not. Just my comment on that reason, but I, I, I'm watching what you're doing here, so I'm not gonna disagree with it.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. All in favor?
When you say, when you say put mechanisms into place to assure there's no future budget impasse, what kind of mechanisms are you thinking of at this point? That would avert that?
Do you want me to speed on that? Well, C cap has sent out an email to all the county commissioners across the state, and we've put together this resolution, and we're all signing it, and they're encouraging all the counties to send this to our legislators.
So you don't have any idea yet what the mechanisms are to avert any more budget delays and impacts on the counties?
According to the motion on the agenda, it would urge the General Assembly to come up with those mechanisms and put them into place.
Right.
So you just urge, and then General Assembly and Administration means what, our state government? And the state government just fails to do that, so you're urging them to do what they couldn't do already?
Can't give up, right, Vera?
Right.
Can't give up.
All right.
All in favor?
Or you can give them suggestions?
You can, we all can. The public can do that, they make them phone calls.
And the commissioners and the And the public can give suggestions to the state government.
Yes. Anything else? Elton?
I'm public comment, sorry.
Yes.
I'd like to thank the minister and the public and the county officials for supporting our fireman fundraiser two weeks ago. And it was a real cold night, I look surprised we had to travel again.
Yeah, very good turnout, it was amazing, for three degrees, minus three degrees, and we had a very good turnout.
Could we vote on number 18, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Another comment?
Yes, sir.
We raised a lot of money this year, we raised, and we started that person to talk about.
That's awesome. He's talking about the Rush Fire Company, for those of you that don't know.
Yeah.
He's talking about. But I believe they're trying to raise money for a playground, aren't they?
Well, that's another thing.
That's one thing. Yeah. Anything else?
Where are we, are we at public comment?
Yes.
Or are we on?
We're at public, we're at public comment.
I have, yeah, okay.
We voted on 18.
All right, we're at public comment now?
Yes.
Without ranker and without animosity, I want to revisit what I said before regarding the absence of the chairman of the commissioners. You're required to be here twice a month. If you're ill, I'm sure, I'm sure, well, I'm reasonably sure that any commissioner or any public official will call in and say, I'm ill, I can't make it. My kid has to go to the hospital, my car won't start. But he's unavailable in terms of, in my opinion, is not an acceptable answer. He's responsible, whoever, whoever it may be. Responsible to the public to be here, you were elected for a four-year term, twice a month. I understand he may have important business, but even that would be an excuse, or a reason. So I, I just find it incredulous that the answer is he's unavailable. That's, that's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stevens?
Sorry, I haven't been able to be here in the last few months, but I've been out trying to convince people in other states that maybe they should hold off on what the excitement we're having here with the oil and gas extraction. I'll name a couple. Well, Neo, in the last year, in a couple of months, New York said, forget it. Maryland, I was responsible for, helpful with that. And then I spent a lot of time in Florida the last couple of years, where they're trying to drill for oil. Their, their entire population, they have 70% of the 20 million people are represented by resolutions for bans. That's what happens when people stand up for their communities. But I will say something, if you haven't noticed, you've been on the front page of the, of the news, Scott Ely's family and Ray Hubert, who live in Dimmock, finally are getting their day in court with Cabot Oil and Gas in Scranton, in federal court. I don't know why Cabot let it go to a jury trial in Scranton, but they don't seem very happy. They have eight lawyers there, worth about $4,000 an hour, going against two pro bono attorneys for the Elys. That's what we get, that's how we're supposed to protect ourselves, because we can't rely on the county, we can't rely on the state to protect us, or the federal government, which I find very interesting. I'd like to, just so you know, I have a letter that I've had for a while, from John Hanger, way back when, when he was the secretary of the DEP. It's quite clear, and I'll leave a copy of it, what his opinion was, that Cabot was guilty of contaminating the water down there. He found them guilty, and was also gonna charge them $12 million for a water line, which was never put in. So these families have been putting up this for seven and a half years. I've only been in this area living, and now, you know, here, knowing about what's happening for a little over six years. Frankly, I'm ashamed at how the community here turned their back on these people, nobody has any hope for anybody. That seems very interesting. Secondly, the Halloran family, who I didn't even know till a few months ago, is now under threat of the federal government allowing tree cutters to come in and cut trees down on their property for the Constitution pipeline. You'll be happy to know that New York State has not approved the 100-mile section of the pipeline. It is still in jeopardy of not being approved. Yet, the federal government is letting them come, Williams Constitution, cut down 25 miles, 100 foot wide of trees. In our county, right here, there's only one spot that that Constitution pipeline happens, is in this county. Not one peep from any elected official. The district attorney said he can't get involved, it's a federal issue. No, it's a private property, tax-paying citizen issue. Why, nobody is standing up for them, and here's the reason. If you have 80% of a project, I've already talked to Williams, all their representatives, all the way to corporate headquarters, 80% of the project is in jeopardy, but they're picking on the 20% side, which is here. And of course, everybody in Pennsylvania gave approval for them to move forward. First, the state government gave the 401 permit, which is what they're waiting for in, in New York. Frankly, I'm embarrassed. You know, thankfully, my mom is from Oswego, New York, I'm a fifth-generation New Yorker, and I own my sixth-generation home here. I'll tell you, I'm frankly embarrassed. My father, my grandfather, my great-grandfather would have been standing with 12-gauge shotguns at that property, telling the federal government, you don't set foot on my property until this whole project is approved. If they say no, they've already cut down almost all the trees, the Hallorans are now waiting, under threat of chainsaws coming any time after today. And if they were told, if you get in the way, you're gonna be arrested by federal agents. Isn't that interesting? So let me ask this body, just so you're aware. If they don't approve in New York, because I've been on the phone with the governor's office, been on the phone with the Attorney General's office in New York, and the D.C., they're not very happy watching this. They know that Williams is trying to force their hand by cutting all these trees down. Do you know what's gonna happen if they disapprove that? I want the county to sue Williams for cutting the private property down and destroying it, because they no longer have eminent domain if they don't have the project. If the project gets killed by New York. Why is New York looking at that? They're trying to cross 100 miles of the most beautiful area in the southern tier, all the trout fishing stream areas and everything, by plowing through 100-mile stretch, 100 feet wide. When are we gonna stand up for our private property rights? When is the county? You collect money from us every year for our taxes, for our property. But it means nothing. If the federal government can send jackbooted thugs in to arrest us, when all we're trying to do is say, hey, can you wait till the whole project is approved? 80% is not approved, but we're letting them bully 20%? I'm blaming the governor for this. Our governor should be standing up and saying, until they approve it in New York, stay off my citizens' properties. It's not necessarily just the county's problem. But we don't pay taxes on our property to the state, we pay it to this body right here. And why Alan Hall and the two of you are not at very least going to find out what's going on with the Hallorans. There's the order. They have to stay 150 feet away from the right of way, on their own property, they still have to stay 150 feet away, or they get arrested by federal agents. Where are the men and women that founded this? My grandmother would have been up there with a shotgun at 98 years old. She would not have tolerated this. It's not about being against something, it's about being for the property, for the people that dug the rocks out of the property to make growable food here, and to have farms and survive, she said, 98 and a half winters. She didn't live here, she survived 98 winters, that's what she said. So, in honor of my grandmother, my father, my grandfather, my great-grandfather, and the other generations before them here, I'm just gonna say, where are we on this? Why are we not standing up for tax-paying citizens? It's not about picking a side. If you don't know, a week and a half ago, I was on the property, and the Williams came with their attorney, three Williams employees, and a bunch of guys with chainsaws, and three state troopers unmarked. And they could not prove that they had the right to go on the property. So the three troopers said, bye, you're on your own, you wanna go trespass on their property, that's fine with us, but whatever happens is on you. So Williams went to the judge, a federal judge in Scranton, who is ordering these people to stay off their property and let them cut down trees before they even can do it. And I'll leave with this. Do you understand what they're gonna do with the trees? Because this is what we were told by the families, by Williams. They're gonna cut the whole 25 miles down and leave them lay, and when they come up to do the pipeline, they're gonna put them through a wood chipper. Now, I don't know about you, but my forester had to leave my property. We were, every five years, had a maintenance cut down on the property, and you could pay your taxes with it. That is not possible anymore. Nobody will come and pick up the trees. So for the last three years, we've been able to sell one load of wood off of our property to help pay taxes. Because when you cut down thousands of acres of trees and dump them on the market, the trees become valueless. My 60-year professional forester told me if it falls down, burn it, because that's all it's worth. Is that all we've reduced that to? Anything above the ground is worth nothing, the homes, the trees, the tax, what we pay taxes for. We live on the surface, we don't live underground. And I'm happy that there's things underground that might benefit citizens of the Commonwealth and the, and the Susquehanna County. But that's not where we live, that's not what our forefathers lived on. They didn't care what was under the ground, they cared what was on top. The only people they cared about, things they cared about underground, was six feet underground. That's all they cared about. And so my concern, I, I, sorry, I haven't been here for a while, so just wanted to get that off my chest. But please stand up, last night we went to the planning commission meeting. They're gonna put two more compressor stations, did anybody see that? One is 141 acre, and the other one's 121. They're the two largest, that's number 46 and 47. I asked them if they ever remember S&amp;H green stamps, growing up. When we get to 50 stamps, do we fill the book, and we all get a gas mask and a noise meter? Because we're gonna need one, to live in this county. I, I don't recognize it after only six years, and I'm not somebody that's been here like some of these people, for five, six, seven, eight, nine generations. What do you think they're thinking, even though they're staying quiet? They're embarrassed, and so I appreciate the fact that you allowed me to speak a little bit longer, because I'm not here, but these are all pertinent issues, and the county should look at it. I'm glad you're running this place on gas, but not all of us are so enamored of the blue flame, and we prefer not to have bullies come into our neighborhoods acting like friends, throwing thousand-dollar bills around, and demanding something from us they don't get. So I, for one, will still stand with my neighbors, and I hope you'll do the same thing, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Yes, ma'am?
Here's the fabulous thing about democracy. I appreciate everything you said, but it's 100% incorrect. Hanger even came and stood in a private home and told you that water is fine. So, yes, he did. I have you on video getting all upset when he told you the water is fine.
No?
Yes.
I was over there.
Hanger was
John Hanger, I'm sorry. If she's your buddy, ma'am, I'm just gonna leave you a copy of this, too.
Oh, it's not, it wasn't
Were you there?
It was Saunders.
That's the person she's speaking about.
It was Saunders. But back on the other side, I appreciate what's going on with the gas industry, the infrastructure that's coming in to allow us the living that we are making, and the way that we are heating our houses, the way that, did you drive a car here? So you have to think about hypocritical, hypocritical things that you're also saying on your soapbox. That's all it is, it's democracy, and I appreciate what you guys are doing to opposites.
Thank you very much. Anything? Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to know, I heard there's a huge incinerator that's planned to be built in Gibson behind Flying J. And I'd like to know, Mary Ann, anybody knows about this? The incinerator that's being?
I have heard nothing about it.
You haven't heard anything about it?
I've heard nothing about it.
Nothing yet at this point? I also wanna say that I was at the planning commission meeting last night, and I was appalled that the planning commission, again, approved the largest that we were going to have compressor stations in our county. We already have super-large ones in New Milford. 12 engines, three of them in New Milford, the fourth being built in a three-mile radius of, off of 492. We're talking New Milford, Jackson. They were the largest, now, these two that they just approved last night, and which I objected to, and others, that are going to be even bigger, because it's 10 gas-fired engines, four electric-fired engines. So we're talking 14 engines as opposed to 12. We're also talking that it's on much bigger property, the others were about 60 acres, this is now double and more, the acreage. All kinds of buildings, several buildings on the property. This is all near homes, as well as the other ones. And this is in Brooklyn. Now, in Brooklyn, we already have a large compressor station called the Williams Central. So now they're proposing, and they are getting approval for two more. So there'll be three in Brooklyn. So I wanna say that all the emissions that comes from this, we got 47 stations, they're all permitted individually, as far as emissions and noise, not as a group, not as cumulative, not as aggregate, which I've been asking DEP to do, because you're talking tons of emissions, of toxic, toxic carcinogenic emissions from each of these stations, and it's on their air permits. You can get a copy of the air quality permits, it's public information. You're talking VOCs, you're talking B-taxes, formaldehydes, particulate matter, nitrous oxides. This is all going into our air. And we are breathing it near these homes, near these stations in our homes. And the noise, which is industrial noise 24/7. So I just wanna say again that I object to this, and what's happening to this county, the continued industrialization, takeover by the industry, and I'm saying it for my children, my grandchildren, and everybody's children and grandchildren, and for future generations. That they, I want the future generations to know that some people objected, even though we seem to be in the minority, because we're speaking out, that some people stood up to this invasion and takeover, which is all throughout the state of Pennsylvania at this point, 39 counties, and the government. And that's my, and I hope that you guys can eventually do something, or come and visit the harmed in our community, the people who are suffering with the noise, the emissions, and the water contamination, which is throughout our county, and not just in the parts of Dimmock and Springville. But it's all over the county.
Thank you, Vera.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.